I call to order the Essex Planning Commission meeting of September 11th, 2015. Here in the Essex High School. Did I say 2015? Always 2015 in here, you know. No gray, no gray in my beard 10 years ago, 2025, thank you, thank you. 1985, I look very different. Um, so our first item after the call to order is the agenda additions and changes. Commissioners, do we have any changes to the agenda here written? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I say, move by Shu, seconded by Paula, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda is approved as is. Our next agenda item is public to be heard. Now, published to be heard, to be very clear, is public to be heard on items that are not already on the agenda. So if you are here for the main event tonight, that will of course be item six. But if you have something unrelated to that, by all means, this is your time, you can come to the microphone or stand and speak loudly and be recognized. Learning, public to be heard on anything not already on the agenda. Alright. Hearing none and seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes, this is usually at the end, but we bumped this up so that we could focus on our main item. Commissioners, do we have any thoughts about the minutes? Do we have a motion for the minutes?
I move that we accept them, that's right.
Moved by Paula.
Second.
Seconded by Georgia, any changes in the minutes, did everyone get a chance to see them? I was not there for this one, so I'll be abstaining from the vote.
There's usually you following. Yeah, I didn't find anything, so.
Alright, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of accepting and approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it, six to nothing with one abstention. Alright, that's all we have to do tonight, right?
Yep.
So, next item on the agenda, business item. Item A, Women's Correctional Facility Zoning Change Request Discussion with Building and General Services, BGS, and Department of Corrections, DOC. What I would like to do first is just remind everyone where we are in the process before we get to sort of discussing the nuts and bolts to meet, if you will. So, the Department of Corrections, as is their right, came to us with a zoning use change proposal. When something comes to us, what we do first is we have meetings in a workshop format, which is what we're doing right now, this is still one of those. The next step, we can go two directions, I'm not pressuring what happens tonight, we could say, we have enough here to have an official proposal that we would then hold a public hearing on. That would be a hearing on a definitive proposal, yea or nay. Another possibility is tonight we say, we don't act on the proposal before us, or we say, we don't have enough to act on the proposal, we have another workshop, we come back, or we suggest changes to the proposal that's before us and move that to a public hearing. So I want to be very clear, nothing definitive is occurring this evening. At the end of this evening, there will not be the passage of an amendment to the zone. We will not be sending anything to the select board passed by us this evening, this is a workshop format and not a public hearing. Just, I want everyone to be very clear where we are and what we're here to do. So then, if, going further, if the PC were to approve something at a subsequent public hearing, that would go to the Essex Select Board to approve. And if that is approved, again, just in the interest of open, the process is, voters, 5% of town voters would have 20 days to write a petition, signed by, again, by 5% of the voters, that then would force, compel the entire issue to be resolved by Australian ballot. And again, so where we are right now is, this is still meeting workshop, but I want to be very transparent about what the entire process is. With that said, let's get to the meat of it. Staff.
Do you want to introduce the people from the state first?
Well, right, staff.
Yes.
Could you introduce our guests, please?
Sure. Well, I am not sure who is speaking tonight, but we, there are a bunch of folks over here from the state that we've invited, I don't know if I should speak, and we've invited to come in and answer questions that you all had posed, um, questions that you had posed from your own discussions, but also from some things that the public had, had requested as well. And just a reminder that, uh, the questions went out a while ago, we got responses back. You had a chance to discuss those a little bit, and, um, so I think they'll be discussing their answers and maybe a little bit of extra information. So with that, um, I'll invite whoever's coming up to speak, and I'll let you introduce yourselves. Yes, but, um, the microphones are here, so. It's best.
Yes, whoever's planning on speaking could introduce themselves, please.
Gets a little proud of you.
Yeah.
Not too many.
Good evening, I'm Wanda Manoli, I'm the Commissioner of the Department of Buildings and General Services.
Good evening, my name's John Murad, I am the Commissioner for the Department of Corrections.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, we do have some of our program specialists here, and if for any reason, um, you want to get into anything specific regarding site or some details, with your permission, we may ask them to come up and, um, answer those questions.
Yes.
Okay.
Perfectly fine. Um, so what our process will be, is there's sort of two, two tracks, there's one track, the, if you will, proposal itself, on its own merits, how that would work. How the, how the facility would work, what the idea is, and then also, we have, again, in the process we're talking about, that I mentioned earlier, from PC workshops to public hearing to finish, when we put something up for a public hearing, we have to file a written report that explains the reasoning. I'm just gonna read the, um, the relevant Vermont statute, so you know what I'm talking about. So, "Brief explanation of the proposed bylaw amendment and include a statement of purpose and shall include findings regarding how the proposal, A, conforms with or furthers the goals and policies contained in the municipal town plan, including the effect of the proposal on the availability of safe and affordable housing. Whether it is compatible with the proposed future land uses and densities of the municipal plan, and then carries out as applicable the specific proposals for any planned community facilities." And in case you're wondering where that can be found, that is Vermont Statute Title 24, Chapter 117, um, 4441, Subparagraph C, in case you have some time later on and want to give it a look, that's where we're getting that from. So, with that in mind, I'm going to turn to both staff and the state, you received the further sort of questions for clarification we had about the questions that we sent to you and you responded, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, I'm referencing the document from June 5th, I think there were approximately, or we've been working from the June 5th document that we submitted, and I believe there were 16 specific questions, Chair?
Yes, that is the one we're talking about, let me hold it up on my end. Everyone has that document. Commissioners, do you have that document at the ready?
We do, we do.
I'd like to start with, there we go. With the commission. So commissioners, were there, where, rather, where were there specific further questions that you wanted clarification on? In terms of what answers we received?
Chair, there, I had a number of them, wondered if we could maybe get each question?
Okay.
And drill into each question, and then?
Perfectly fine, I was just wondering if something stood out, but if we, if we're all across the board, then absolutely. So let's, let's begin with question one. Question one, and this is, this document is in the packet, so everyone should have access to it. "The Planning Commission is requesting public records for emergency services paid for by the state, and requests the volume of calls, type of calls, the report should include calls from all service providers, not just from South Burlington. Please provide a multi-year report to show the trends and include the number of inmates for each year." We all had the answer in front of us. What were our, again, at the commission level, our specific further inquiries on question one?
I can take it for a swing.
Please do.
I'm, I'm curious, and I'm not able to interpret this, the response, in the manner that I was looking for. The question had been put to the state as to provide documentation of all services that provided, all, all, uh, providers that provided emergency services to Chittenden County Correctional Center. And we only received something from, uh, South Burlington. Is it's the state's position on the record that the only, the only provider, the only ambulance service, the only fire service, the only provider that responded to any actions, any requirements at the Chittenden County Correctional Center was South Burlington?
No, there's always the possibility that there might have been other entities on one-off occasions, certainly, it's the Vermont State Police that would respond for things other than emergency services, medical services, but could a, uh, an Essex rescue have gone there at one point, uh, if, for example, South Burlington's not available? It's possible.
I think that was, that was the question that was posed, to see what the impact was outside of South Burlington. South Burlington data had been provided from the onset, the question was, what was the impact to the other services in this, in this, in this county? And I don't, I haven't seen that at any point. That's my question.
That's your question. Any other commissioners on question one specifically? Alright, in which case, question two, provide specific details about why both sites, or why, why are both sites viable? So, my, Justy, do you have another one?
Somebody's gotta go for me this time. Nobody has something I do, but?
Alright, so I, my, my question, I'll, I'll take this one, and we'll see where, where it goes. My sort of expanded question on this is, this is built, and perhaps with good reason, as a different kind of facility from what has previously been. A Scandinavian-style restorative approach is what, what's been said. And my broad question is, does that itself incline towards particular infrastructure needs and therefore particular site? And this, this is skipping ahead a bit, but questions three and 10 mention there, there are different reasons why you choose particular sites. And I sort of read that, and it struck me as sort of an abstract answer, like, there, of course, there are going to be different reasons for different sites than anything, but is there something particular to this kind of facility that would require or give preference towards one or the other of the sites?
So, um, let me start, and then, uh, we can work together on this. So I, I believe I understood your first question to be, was there any specific infrastructure needs to support this type of design? Um, it would, it's still a building, and the infrastructure of any typical building is still going to be needed. They would need to be a sewer system, they would need to be water, electrical, so the design would not drive a different type of normal infrastructure, um, elements that you would see with, with any construction. If I could, I would like to take a moment and talk to, um, the Planning Commission, since June, when we, um, first responded to question number two, um, through those work sessions and discussions, we've been asked, um, and I think this will sort of refer to your, to, to three, why have we not done further exploration of the site? We've come to you and we've asked for you to consider two sites, um, that you're familiar with, and part of that is, when we look at properties and we identify the needs, we typically do not get further into, um, testing the sites and looking at the capacity of the sites or restrictions of the sites. And it's one of the items that, um, we felt that we heard you very clearly, could we analyze those two sites to see if one has a better fit from a number of reasons? We actually just completed that work, we did expand, um, and explore this, and we completed that work, um, and we've just received a presentation last week, and we did respond, um, to, at the time, that Site One was the preferred site. I do want to say to the commission, um, since our written response, we've looked at the detail of the feasibility of developing both of those sites, looking at sewer, water, gas lines, develop acres, access, impact on recreational services, um, sloping of lands, and as a result of that, in looking at the site from that point of view, um, Site Two has actually become a more preferred site. While Site One may be feasible, Site Two actually has more strengths, um, and the strengths that we've identified for Site Two, which I think are important for you to hear, is there's, um, no natural gas, um, transmission lines there is on Site One, um, there's no impact on the vast trail on Site Two as there is on Site One. The, um, Site Two is within, entirely within the industrial zoning, Site One is a partial industrial zoning, there's, um, our review of the site and what it would look like, where the building would be, we've interpreted the site would have greater privacy from, Site Two would have greater privacy from the neighboring properties, um, and that it would also have less, um, exposure to the view corridors from, from the road, and, um, Site Two has a better capacity for onsite septic, in case that's the way that we have to go, because we are aware of, um, your, um, your current septic, um, capacity and what is there, so we took that into consideration. So, um, we, the state, are very open to discussing with you, um, if you think it's in our best interests of amending our request, um, for the zoning regulation change and to consider just one site. We still know both sites are feasible, Site Two definitely, um, is, is better for our programming and better for site, uh, development, and again, we'll provide any information, um, that you would like regarding this or answer any questions, um, at this time.
Can you just remind everyone which Site, Site Two is? It's off 117.
Site Two is the one, um, excuse me, I'm gonna return to, to Brina, who's our project manager, and Site Two, I believe, is off Sand Hill.
Off, no.
No, see, I do that all the time. Off River Road.
117, okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Quick follow-up, because you touched on something that I, I was kind of getting at in my question, I think I was a little too indirect. So you said, a particular site would be better vis-à-vis the programs you're going to do? So my question was, what is sort of the metric by which you determine this site is better for the program? You answered the physical infrastructure component, but what makes Site One versus Site Two better for a program perspective?
Yeah, if I may, thank you.
Absolutely.
So, I, I think one of the biggest issues that we discovered in, in undertaking these additional analyses, analyses that, that really normally wouldn't be done prior to a change of use, but I, I think, I'm hopeful that they are seen as, as good faith efforts on our part to try to ameliorate concerns, to address issues that may arise, and in fact, it turned out to be useful in that one of the, the primary things we discovered was topographical. The slopes and hills that are in Site, what is known as Site One, which is, uh, in the vicinity of Susie Wilson Road and that connector, uh, are not, uh, compatible with what we envision as a facility that would be, in all hopes, a single-floor facility in the residential parts, uh, that would allow for greater amounts of outdoor space, that would allow for separate, uh, buildings that would be for reentry, um, and so, the, the use of the Site One would have almost mandated multi-stories. Um, we may still need to have parts of the existing facility that we design ultimately be multi-story, but that's not our preference. Our preference in, in looking at models like a facility in Maine, that is, is really a cutting-edge facility with regard to, uh, how we can have a more compassionate kind of, more, uh, more rehabilitative kind of environment within the facility, uh, does ask for something that, to the best of our ability, is one-story, wherever we can make it that way, uh, and Site Two is much more conducive to that. I recognize that any kind of building like this is, you know, challenging, you guys, as, as a planning commission, hear this all the time, my parents, who live out in Underhill, still, uh, complain about the fact that there's a stoplight at, uh, Brown's Trace and Route 15, these things happen, but, uh, this is an example of growth that we need. We need to take a look at the existing facility in South Burlington and find a way to create a building that is going to be better, that is going to be more in line with best practices as they're evolving, and is going to give us the kind of flexibility we have in order to understand that today's best practices may not be those in 10, 15, 20 years, and we need to make certain that what we do create is something that is going to really be, uh, compatible with those kinds of changes and what we want today.
Any further questions, John, with respect to question two? Justy, you had something, was that number two?
It was number two, and, and quite frankly, you completely blew my question out of the water and answered it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And so, question?
Why?
Paula?
Um, why is proximity to the existing facility important?
I'm sorry ma'am, you mean proximity in the sense of being in Chittenden County?
It says in this case, the location, including proximity to the existing facility. Proximity to human service providers and other, it lists some other things, but proximity to the existing facility, why? The existing facility, I understand, would be South Burlington?
Yes, that's right, forgive me, you know, I've been on this job for four weeks, this is, is week four for me, I didn't, I didn't prepare this, um, and I don't know why it would say that, I don't know that proximity to the existing facility matters per se, I, I think that proximity to the services that exist in Chittenden County is incredibly important, and I think that proximity to?
I understand that, but that's not my question.
So, I don't have an answer for you as far as being close to South Burlington, ma'am, but?
So, um, as being part of the working group and the team, we're very cognizant as a state in general of our staff and where they live and where they commute from, and so proximity to how, um, we currently staff that, these employees are in this area, the majority of them, so that is part of, um, not only the services that the commissioner spoke of, but, um, we take great consideration on how moves like this and, um, you know, building a new building impacts the employees. You're welcome.
Further follow-ups on question two, commissioners? Alright, alright, number three, the question number three, for those of you who have it in front of you. "The choice of the two locations in Essex, which is partially based in the site's adjacency to the GMT bus line. The Colchester site has no bus service availability, and the River Road site is about half a mile to the Sand Hill River Road bus stop that only operates now on weekdays. How do the sites qualify as having a commuter stop?" And, Ian, you'd like to hop on this one?
I, uh, interested in this one, uh, for a couple of different reasons, that the bus transportation is certainly one piece of it, uh, and, and has been a hot topic in town to begin with, so what is the state going to be able to do in order to help encourage bus transportation? I would assume you'd prefer it to go all the way to the facility if possible, uh, and as well as, going along with that, 117 is a busy state road, um, which is in need of improvements, uh, in particular, if you're talking about increasing the amount of traffic that you're talking about for this kind of facility, what is Department of Corrections going to do to help the Department of Transportation with, uh, upgrade, making upgrades that are necessary on 117?
So, um, I'll address this from a building, um, perspective and how we work in other communities or we look at other projects, so, we are aware there's been a change in bus transportation, and that occurred after we started looking at the site, but in our due diligence, if, um, in working with Essex and we get the ability to move forward to the next step, this will be a critical piece of that discussion, so I don't have an answer for you, but I, I direct how we're going to do it, but what I will say is conversations with our Agency of Transportation, because they're our sister agency, and the needs for these services will occur and will be a part of that overall, um, discussion, and I know, if we, when we, if we get to the permitting process, these studies and the impacts will also have to be included in that, and so we would be committed to having those conversations, and we understand, and the bus transportation, and I'm speaking for the commissioner, he's gonna, um, you know, I want him to, to step in, is really important to the success of this program and the vision of, especially with the reentry, um, we do know that there has to be transportation, and that could also benefit your community, and we should continue talking about it. Commissioner?
No, I don't have much to add to that, I, I will say that, I, I think that the current use of that site, uh, probably involves more heavy equipment than this site would
Further questions on, follow-ups on question three? Question four then, "Could the facility be converted to a different facility? And could it be shared with another facility? Is there an intent to go to a private operating facility? Would there be any circumstance where out-of-state inmates could be housed at any women's or men's facility?" Commissioners have any follow-up, given the answer? Commissioner Russo, please.
I've noticed in the response, two different times the word intent is used, there's no intent, it is the intent of the State General Assembly, there is no intent to operate the facility privately, I don't, I don't, that's not firm enough.
Right.
It's, it's vague, it's no intent, that doesn't mean there's nothing at all to stop you from doing it. In the case of, if, if a zoning amendment were to go through, would you be amenable to language that locks it in to the exact proposed use that you are putting in front of us?
It, it proposed use in that it would be only run by the state of Vermont for women?
Women's reentry facility, not a, not any sort of a long-term?
Well, it's not merely a reentry facility, it is also a carceral facility.
That's fine, but what, the, the two proposed uses that, that are part of the proposal, the primary one that has been promoted has been the reentry component, with a, with a secondary use for the, uh, whatever, incarceration. But, the big key issue for me is whether or not, if that, if that use was determined no longer required, no longer wanted, would that potentially become a men's facility? Would that become a storage depot? Would that become an office building? Would that become an XYZ? So, the question that I have would be, would you be amenable to having language that locks it in to exactly the use that you are asking for and only that use?
Well, I'm not an attorney, uh, I can promise you that during my tenure, as long as I hope it to be, that would not be something that would happen, uh, with regard to that change in use that you're talking about. Uh, with regard to whether or not such language would be appropriate, or is anything that the state has ever done, I don't know that answer, and as I said, I'm not an attorney, there may very well be viable reasons about precedent with regard to the state in putting itself in a negotiating position around something like that. Uh, but I do want to pledge, as I said, uh, there is no, uh, there is no foreseeable, uh, future where we say that this is not a women's facility, we are designing it as such, uh, that is where we are gathering the, uh, ideas and plans that go into what we'll eventually create, uh, that is the need, uh, because it is replacing a women's facility, and insofar as privatizing or taking in out-of-state, we currently have to send some Vermont, uh, people who are incarcerated out of state, we have no future in which we're going to be bringing people from out of state in on a, as I would think you're talking about, like a pay, a pay basis.
Yeah, and I, I think my, and I, I won't debate that.
As incarcerated people.
Yeah. My, my question again, if you look at, if you're using the Chittenden County Correctional Center as the, as the standard, I can't quote you the dates, I can't quote you the times, but it's served multiple populations over its lifetime, right? The population shifted, I don't, I don't know if it was ever a combined facility, but it's been a men's facility, it's a women's facility, that's really where I'm getting to. Would the state be looking at potentially evolving the use as, in the future, if the population shifts?
To my knowledge, it never held men who were incarcerated, it held detainees who were men at times. Uh, when it was open for that, when the Chittenden Regional Facility was open for that purpose, as, for example, for incapacitated people, and it would take male, in caps, um, from various parts of Chittenden County, uh, so, those kinds of things are potentially something that the facility may have, but insofar as being a place where men are incarcerated, that is not in the plans.
I think just as a, as a word, again, the words? I think just as a, as a word, again, the words used in the response of intent, those are red flags.
Fair.
Ian?
So a quick follow-up question is, there's a lot of discussion about how this particular facility would be built by design for women specifically. Can you talk a little bit about what design differences that would be going into a women's facility that would make it a little more cumbersome to at some point down the road flop it to something else? Is there, where, where is the design intent differentiated between men's and women's facility? If we're just talking about paint, you know?
I'd like to invite Sabrina, the project manager, who's been working very closely, we also have, who's working, who has been working very closely with the team on this.
Great. So Sabrina Karish, I'm the project manager, I'm also an architect. The primary difference between what we're looking to do with this facility and a men's facility is women are just a lot softer on a facility, so it won't be built as hard as the men's facilities are built.
Can you explain that?
Sure. So the majority of our men's facilities are concrete, they're built very hard, metal beds or plastic beds. The women just aren't, they're not as rough on a facility, so we can, we can build a facility softer. And we have not designed this facility yet, so we can, you know, we will look at things like drywall instead of concrete block or poured concrete, we'll look at things like normal window, commercial windows rather than a secure window. The fencing is not, is not as required to be as tall, as rough. We don't really see a lot of escapees with the women's population.
So in the end, the, the building itself will feature some cost prohibitive measures to change it from a women's facility to a men's facility strictly because you're talking stick and drywall for a portion of the walls as opposed to full cement block? Is that a fair assessment?
I think that's a great analysis of what she's talking about, so.
Do you want to talk about... Ooh, doesn't reach that far. I'm Kathy Esten-Borskin, the Director of Women's Services for the department. So trauma-informed design is something that we have used frequently to describe the building of this facility. And because women's trauma is such an integral part of their pathways into the justice system, things like having more natural light, access to outside, those kinds of features are going to be part of the design and also make it very suitable for the female population.
Any further on question four? Just gonna remind the public that you will have a chance to speak later on. Question five. Question about pilot. What would the payment be? What are other specific carrots that the town would or could get from the state? Several ideas were floated, salaries for fire and rescue, road infrastructure, water treatment facility, additional capacity. Anyone at the table have any follow-ups with the answer we received?
Really wasn't much of an answer. Kind of a wait-and-see. There wasn't really any specific responses of what you either have provided to other communities in the past or specifics of what you could, would, or have done before.
If I may respond to that, we have agreements with our communities that all of the facilities are in. All of those agreements are different. And it could have been because of overtime, it could be what, what is going on in the community. But what we are committed to is, you know, as we move forward, and this typically, this process and the detail comes after we've moved into the permitting process. And the practice that the state has used is a small working group will come together and we start talking about the needs of the facility or things that you want us to consider. And this memorandum of understanding is, is a binding agreement. We work through each of the elements, and it has to be approved by the Secretary of Administration, by the legislature, because typically there are dollars of some sort committed in this agreement. So we'll lead the process and have the, and the working group and work on this, but there is a full approval process that, that you go back and forth with. I didn't read the question, and I apologize that you wanted to see examples. We have some examples that we can forward to you, they're public documents, so I apologize on behalf of that. But I think it's really important, when you look at these MOUs, that they were specific to what's going on in a community. We've invested in sewer plants, we've invested in roads, we've looked at the pilots and made different adjustments in that. So there are, there are opportunities to talk about what will serve your community in order to support us with this facility. And so when we responded to that question, it was very hard to tell you what the difference in a, and you've read the, the response, we used an estimated number. You know, the pilot is in statute, and it's very clear how that is calculated. But there, we have, you know, in St. John'sbury, we had a different agreement than what we have in Springfield, so.
I think that's, that's to be expected. Each community is different. I think what the ask was, were what are some of the pilot examples you've had? And, and that gives us some, some understanding. And to further, no, comment you made a little bit earlier, you normally do this after the permitting process has started, but this is not just a permitting process. This is we're changing our town plan and our town zoning map. So this is a little bit different for us, and it needs that, this level of detail needs, it's going to help drive that decision. It's more than just, is this a permit or not? So I think that's worth keeping in mind, that when we ask for something, it may be out of the norm, it's because this is out of the norm.
And, and as I said, I apologize, I don't think the question was interpreted that way, and I'm more than happy to provide these documents to you. It's, it's not an issue we will. And if you want to, you know, as you referenced earlier, having working groups, if you want to have a small working group where we can start talking about it, we're not opposed to that. We're truly here as partners.
No one else does? I have a follow-up to Dusty's. So in your answer, you say, and you've talked about how things are site-specific, I think we all understand that, but it says, "The state will then engage with town officials." And my follow-up question is, the state doesn't make it exactly clear which department will be doing what, and here's what I mean by that. Let's say you in Corrections or you in Buildings and Grounds acknowledge, "We absolutely need more bus service here. We'd like to make that part of the, part of the negotiations." But then either GMT or Vtrans, for their own reasons, can't make that happen. And so when it says the state will engage, what is the process of Department of Corrections and Buildings and Grounds talking to other relevant state departments? Because you could, you could agree to something and think it's a good idea with, to use the word, every intent of doing it, but other departments may not be able to make that happen. So what, what is sort of the process when you say working groups and stakeholders?
So I think the, the best way for me to explain this is if we establish a working group and we know that's one of the items that you want to discuss, it's our responsibility to bring them to the table and to be a part of the conversation so they have an understanding. Because I cannot speak on behalf of the Agency of Transportation prioritizing 117, for example, or working, or, or speak with them on behalf of the busing. Excuse me. They also need to hear your needs, and we have to work collaboratively. This is a collaborative process, and that's how it should be approached, and that's how we plan on approaching it.
If the town, city wanted additional bus routes or more buses on the existing routes, they'd enter into negotiations, and this would be no different. You start by reaching out to the people who are involved in that decision-making process at GMT. You say these are important things, you see what kinds of arrangements can be made, what room they have for these kinds of changes. But ultimately, no, we don't control those third parties, any more than, than the town or the city does when asking for additional coverage for the Champlain Valley Fair, for example.
This is, this is pertinent, because in our 2024 town plan recently passed, and again, which is the framework for our discussions, we assumed a certain level of bus service when talking about where our density would be and where our growth would be, and that's precisely the bus route that has been slowly cut back. So that's, that's why we're asking.
I'd love to be partners with you in trying to get that bus route reinvigorated.
And I just want to build off of that, and you know, this is where the partnership and the conversations go, because I'm speaking again on behalf of Corrections, but what I understand is that bus change, if possible, is just as important to their programming as it is to your community. So it has to be a conversation, and, and we have to, we have to talk about it.
Thank you. Any further on question five? Any follow-ups? I'm not, I'll look over here. Question six then. Act 162, page 36. What is the state's intent with the Springfield facility? Commissioners, you have that answer before you. Any follow-ups with respect to that answer? Okay, I won't look at you, Dusty. I'll look over here first.
It seems kind of related, again, to the, was it question three? To question four. Again, the intent. Where do we, where do we, where do we isolate the intent and remove the ambiguity? I think that's a, that's going to be a hard question to get around if we're always leaving an opening for facilities to be migrated at a later date in time, which that's what this feels like.
I hear you, and I saw, when I read this myself today, I saw that phrase, "at this time," and I can see that that would give members of this body pause. I, again, I can't, I can pledge to be willing to talk about that, to dress it, to try to make any assurances we can about the short and medium-term future of the building, but I can't necessarily make promises that the state may not be willing to make insofar as how it has negotiated in the past with, with other municipalities and entities. And so I'm sure that you understand that, you know, sometimes this language is put in, in ways that, that do try to leave those kinds of, those kinds of openings in the future. I don't see that as being what we're looking to do right now. It is absolutely not what we have. We have a women's facility that needs to be replaced, and we are seeking to build a women's facility where, at least for incarcerated people, they will be women, not, again, you're correct, that CRCF, once upon a time, did have male detainees. Is that a possibility for a facility like this one, potentially? Most of the law enforcement agencies in Chittenden County are clamoring for a return to a place where they can bring detainees, including the Essex Police, rather than driving all the way to Swanton. But for people who are incarcerated and are actually in the facility and not in, in what would be called holding cells and intake, it's a women's facility. That's what we're replacing, and that's what we seek to build.
And how, how agreeable do you think the state would be to having an ironclad legal document that disallows them from changing this to a men's facility at any time in the future?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd be willing to advocate for that. I think it's a reasonable ask from a community that wants to be good partners, and we want to be good partners too, but I don't control that.
We'd need to talk to somebody who does.
Any follow-ups on question six? Question seven. Please provide the report requested by the legislature in Act 162 concerning the women's and men's holding and reentry facilities. Commissioners, you saw that link, I trust we have read it at this point. Do we have any follow-up questions on that one? No?
Surprisingly, no.
Surprisingly, no? All right. Anything from you on question seven? Trevor?
So, well, I'll just ask, so the facility is going to have about 150 residents? Do you have an update on the numbers?
I believe that we currently have more than that in the existing facility, and so we would be planning for, for that number.
Right, so I, for point of information, I have pulled up the November 11th, 2024 population census of 130, 138 individuals exceeds the recommended 85% capacity for the 158 residential bed working estimate. Just to clarify that.
I think the Commissioner is, is looking up some data right now.
I'm trying.
He's, he's trying to, but while he's looking it up, I do know that they are reviewing those numbers again, so this may be an item that we need to provide you an update on.
I, I under, I understood that particular line to indicate that if you just took the persons who were currently there and put them in the new facility with the number of beds proposed, it would be above the 85% recommended automatically. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
That is data that I'm going to have to try to get for you.
Okay. That struck me, admittedly, that struck me as a little odd that you'd immediately be outside of the, even in the proposed facility that you'd like to build, you'd be outside of your own recommended capacity. So I wanted to make sure I was interpreting that correctly. All right, question eight. What is the amount of guest traffic that will be generated? I have a particular question on this, if Dusty wants me to go first.
Yes, please.
Okay. So the initial preliminary traffic impact assessment estimates the maximum of 375 trips. Based on what we just had in question seven and our talk, which we'll have again on question 10, I believe, around bus service, does the number of guest traffic and traffic on the whole depend, in your mind, on what sort of bus service there is or isn't?
No, the formula for, the formula for determining the traffic number, I don't, I don't believe bus service has any play in that. It's based on the building size and the number of trips employees. I don't think bus service is...
And I believe the rationale that we provided doesn't include that.
It does not, I do not think you're in any bus service in those numbers. And we also included a large contingency because we don't know the actual size yet.
But, and that was a very quick follow-up. On what basis is the contingency 50%? Is that just sort of from your experience, 50% is a good number to estimate? Or is there something that makes this proposed facility?
Yeah, we don't want to present you numbers and then end up being higher when we do the, the traffic study, so we're covering ourselves so that the traffic numbers we present, once we do the traffic study, are lower than we have initially presented. That is our hope.
Dusty?
Yo, I'm good.
You're good?
Sorry, bud.
Anyone else for eight?
And this, for, for, for me, this just kind of leads back, we've had this conversation earlier, it just kind of loops back to the same previous conversation about Department of Transportation upgrades to 117. And, and understanding that that's not, in your purview, it's not something that you have control over, but definitely something that we're going to need. And given that, you know, the town of Essex had, like, built a good portion of the connector, which, with the concept, and built some industrial park with the concept that at some point the connector was going to get finished, which the state decided not to do, you know, that, that the promise of stuff that might come is, is a little bit of a sticky wicket for us, so.
So I just want to...
Big sticky wicket.
You know, a, a general comment to that, you know, I hear you and I hear those concerns, and, and it is my experience working with my administration and with the, the Secretary of Transportation and some of these other projects, it's important for them to be a part of the discussion. The Commissioner and I can't commit to that, but what we do commit to as a state, because we want to be partners with you, is that we will bring in all of the necessary players to have those conversations. We will not keep them in isolation, we will not sit here and, and stay in our silo. It's important for them to understand the needs, because this is a state project. This impacts the operation of state government, so it's important to all of us.
Further follow-ups on question eight? Question nine. How many current employees and service providers work in, who work in South Burlington, rather, live within the city limits? Any further requests for clarity from the commissioners having received that answer? No? No? Question 10. Coming back around to sort of the same issue. How would inmates in the work program get to work? I would, I would just note that this again gets to the same thing we've been talking about, about since they, the answer is, this has yet to be determined. Public transportation, if available, would likely be the primary method. Transportation may also be provided by facility staff and/or authorized service providers. And again, we've, we've already talked quite a bit about getting other agencies from the state involved, and so my, my follow-up question is, what if public, imagine whatever scenario, because again, we live in a town where the circle was not finished. If for some reason, public transportation of the sort imagined here does not occur, there are not upgrades, for whatever reason you can think of, what happens? How does that affect the overall success? From your perspective, how does that affect the overall success of the facility?
Of the reentry.
This is more about a direction of, this is more of a corrections question than a buildings question.
We would pursue, you know, other options such as our staff taking the women to work would probably be the, the most likely scenario. And we'll just need to see, you know, at the time that the facility is completed, what the options are, but certainly staff taking the, the women is, is a strong possibility.
That, if I can, with that necessity, more staff overall in the facility?
No, no. I think it would just be managing with the staff that we have and, you know, assigning duties, rearranging things.
Further question 10? Nope, no? All right, question 11. Where does the population of the women's prison come from and how many are Essex residents? And then we are given some data. Any follow-ups from the commission on the data that we received?
How does sentenced differ from detained?
I could say that in mics, they can hear you.
You can ask it out loud.
You can ask it out loud.
How does sentence differ from detained?
A sentenced person has been convicted in a court and sentenced to a certain term in the facility. A detained person may be awaiting trial or awaiting arraignment. I'm sorry, ma'am?
In prison.
But still in the facility, she said.
But still in the facility, yes. That would generally be a, that's a decision by the court based generally on either risk of flight or on the extremity of the crime that is alleged.
Thank you.
Question 12. What are the numbers of re-offenders? What impact will there be on the community when prisoners are released? And we had some, we had the state statute definition of recidivism, we had the rates for men versus the rates for women, and then the, what we expect to happen after reentry. Any further requests for clarity there?
Yeah, I, I think the basis of the question was, from my perspective, was probably more immediate and maybe more literal, like, what happens when they're, when they are let go into, into the township? Not, not necessarily just in general, in concept, what happens to someone that's been incarcerated, but literally, they walk out the door and what happens?
Yeah. I, I believe at other stages of the workshop process that you outlined at the beginning of this meeting, Mr. Chair, there was participation by South Burlington, by both Chief Burke and by the, the city manager, city manager Baker, to say what their experience has been. I, I can tell you, my wife works across from the facility, and her experience with people who are being released has been zero. She didn't know it was a facility for quite some time when she was at her job, and it wasn't until I told her, yeah, that's actually the women's facility for, for the state and for Chittenden County. So the notion that, that people are released and then are sort of, I think there's probably a concern and a fear, and I believe it to be a misplaced one, but a concern and a fear that people will be up to no good as soon as they are released and, and potentially, you know, cause problems for neighbors in those moments after their release. That has not been the case with CRCF, and I think that the people around there, including, you know, I know that there were letters from Vermont Gas, for example, talking about the, both the need for a new facility, but also the fact that the existing one has been a good neighbor to the people who are around it.
Follow-ups on question 12? All right, question 13. Will inmates include those detained by ICE? You have your answer there, and I'm just gonna lead off on this one. I've been waiting for this one. This MOU expires in August 2025. The governor has not yet authorized renegotiations. It is now September 2025. Where do we stand?
So there are two agreements. Neither is with ICE. One is with the U.S. Marshals and one is with U.S. Customs and Border Protection, but they do deal with both, with the potential for immigration detainees. And the position of this, that both of them have been renegotiated and are awaiting execution, and it is the governor's belief, and, and mine too, that, and, and also the belief of people who have actually been through the immigration process here in Vermont, that what we provide in Vermont is access to due process. We provide access to people who can provide legal services to the detainees, and that we are actually in a position to do what we can to ensure that that process is as fair and within the law as possible. The, being in Vermont is better for people who have been taken in Vermont than being moved elsewhere.
So the, the answer is that the MOU with the relevant federal authorities said has been renewed, renegotiated, as in?
They have not yet been executed on both sides.
Awaiting, awaiting execution.
That's correct, but the state has, has executed.
Yeah, not the one I should.
What prevents it from becoming a large number as opposed to a small number?
Capacity, but also just that's not what we've seen, and there are any number of other places that, that go. There was a, an article in The Times to that effect recently.
So I think, I think just a second follow-up, so speaking to, as we've been saying, intent versus what could possibly happen, the intent is, as you say, but there's nothing preventing the scenario that Commissioner Duke outlined, where there.
What prevents this, what prevents, I think, the concern there is simply is capacity. These, again, I, I did find some numbers. The capacity at the facility is 149 and the actual is 161. And that is, that does not leave room for intake of huge numbers of federal immigration detainees.
So where, in that case, where would those detainees go?
We can, we can say no based on capacity in those agreements.
Well, I understand that. Where would they go?
I don't know the answer to that, but I think if there are concerns about that answer, that speaks about the fact that in fact, we, when possible, again, people who've been apprehended here and have connections and ties here, it is better for, for them to be here and have access to our judges and our court system than being moved in, in other locations, as, as I think you've seen.
Thank you. Any further question 13 from other commissioners? Question 14, closely related. Will any inmates be from states other than Vermont? We saw the, the answer there, which there was difficult to parse, since, I'm just gonna read the answer, it's a brief one. Any woman arrested and detained in Vermont will be transported to the state's only female correctional facility. This includes all female individuals regardless of residency. Charged with committing a crime is outlined in the Vermont Criminal Code and lawfully lodged by law enforcement. I, I don't believe that was the intent of the question.
Right.
I don't think it was. Can someone who is arrested in Burlington but happens to be from New York be detained? I think it was, and whoever asked the question, you can clarify, but I think it more meant, could someone from another state convicted and sentenced in that state be moved to this facility in Vermont? That's how, unless, I, I didn't ask that one myself, what was that?
That's probably.
That I took to be the intent, not could someone from some other, other state arrested for a crime in Vermont, but could someone already sentenced elsewhere be moved here?
In limited cases, there are instances in which prisons will move prisoners from one location to another, and supervisees too, and that usually has to do with the prisoner's needs or the supervisee's needs. So for example, you committed a crime in New Jersey, you are under supervision in New Jersey, and then you are, you have family in Vermont, and you ask for your probation period to be transferred to Vermont, and Vermont's probation offices will assume that supervision on behalf of New Jersey. There's an interstate compact for that. The same can happen with people who are incarcerated. It's, it's very rare, and it's not something that is, that contributes to any large percentage of the members of any facility.
I think, just a follow-up clarification, I think the, the intent of the question may have been to the point of, would the state of Vermont be in, open for business in bringing in detainees from other states for the sake of revenue income?
So again, with regard to that, it has to do with capacity. We don't, we have, we have more Vermont incarcerated persons than we have space for them, which is why we do send some out of state to Mississippi. We are not in the business of taking people in for that purpose, aside from those limited instances that I've, I've described. And I, I'm, I'm happy to also be corrected on this by my own staff and, and get back to you if, if I'm speaking.
Yep. Further follow-ups on question 14? Question 15. Does the state have any data on the number of transgender inmates? Any? It's okay, it happens to everybody. And any statistics about any crimes involving transgender inmates that have taken place in a prison? Do we have any follow-up on the answer we were given? Question 16. We understand that the facility will have medical care on-site. What will be the impacts on Essex Rescue Services if the on-site medical care isn't staffed? We saw their answer. Medical care is provided 24/7. Dusty?
I'm back on all this again.
This one, this one also links back to the first question we asked.
Yes.
With the number of calls. So, understanding that there's an on-site medical, what, we really need to understand what population of, of incident is expected to be transported to the hospital, because this facility will not be a hospital-grade facility, is, is my assumption. And there, I'm expecting that there will need to be transport to the hospital, and I don't, for whatever purposes, reasons.
Those would just be emergent situations like heart attacks, like stroke, emergency kind of things that would need.
So what level of care are you looking to do in the, in the clinic that's gonna be on-site? I mean, I, I guess that's what we're kind of looking for, knowing that currently in South Burlington, you're transporting, I would expect almost all medical situations to the hospital.
No.
Okay, so what?
There's a high level of medical service there.
Okay. So, I think it needs to be maybe a little more specific. I know there was a, there was a, this, this goes back to why I wanted to understand the impact of the total Chittenden County emergency services, because if it has to go to the hospital today, it's probably, there's a good percentage of that, from your, from what you just said, that will still need to go to the hospital. So I mean, this is where we're, this is where we're looking. I understand you're amping up the, the response capability of the clinic, but you still have population in these schools. So that's just, that's just an aside, and again, relates back to what was the impact of the rest of the county for the emergency services. And also related to that, sorry, I'm winding up, or winding down, I'm not sure which.
Whichever one, it's fine.
I want to get into VSP versus EPD, because where does the breakdown in the VSP response versus the EPD response come from? Is, I understand that VSP is gonna respond to any event within the compound.
No.
No, they won't respond to any event within the compound.
Well, they, VSP investigates crimes that occur within the facility.
Okay, so, so now we've, we've stated a couple different times that VSP is gonna be the, the law enforcement agency that, that covers that facility, but who's gonna be responding to events, say, on the drive into, in the parking lot of arguments in the outside of the, right outside of the building? Is that VSP or is that EPD? Because that's not inside the facility at that point. So I think we need to understand where the breakdown is, and the reason I'm hammering on that is because EPD is, is a, is a smaller facility and so forth. And Essex Rescue is a volunteer facility, so the impact as compared to South Burlington is not exactly the same. And, and generally, whenever there is a, an emergency response, ambulance response, fire goes with it. Again, Essex doesn't have a full-time fire department at this point. So the impact of the emergency services is different than South Burlington. So again, that's why we're, we're looking at this, because in order to truly assess what the impact to Essex will be, we have to really know what the full range of responses are. So, and I know I expanded on question 16, but I had to.
Just provide a quick.
So if I may, if I may just follow up, apologies. So there is that table under question one, and, and again, I cannot promise you that there has never been an instance in which Essex Rescue has had to respond to Chittenden Regional Correctional Facility because South Burlington was not available, but I truly believe that that has not happened. And Kathy's memory is that that's, her anecdotal memory is that that has never happened. So we can look at the numbers and, and understand that they are, those are the numbers as far as the number of responses in these given years. 19 in 2024, 43 in 2023, 23 in 2022, 23 in 2021. And that is likely to continue to be the pattern of calls for service for Essex Rescue as opposed to, in this instance, South Burlington Rescue. You're right, that's a, that is a burden on them. I think that that's something that we definitely need to consider and talk about with Essex Rescue, but that's not a tremendously onerous set of burdens, and we're not talking about a huge number of additional calls for service. Insofar as, as instances such as your descri, your description of like a fight in, in the parking lot or something, yes, that would be an EPD call. In the same way that currently, if that were to happen outside the CRCF, that would be a South Burlington call. But again, I think that Chief Burke and, and city manager Baker were quite clear that that is not something that they've experienced, in the sense of having that be a locus of disorder or of problem.
So I, just to put, for clarity and transparency, my information comes from a retired corrections officer, and the anecdotal responses he gave, you know, provided for me, was that there was frequently, frequent response from local police, frequent response from area rescue that wasn't South Burlington. So I think it's just, again, the impact is expected to be different than it was in South Burlington. May not be tremendous, but our services are also different. So 44 additional runs on a volunteer organization might have a, a bigger impact than 44 runs against full-time staff. So that's, that's where I think.
That's entirely fair. I definitely appreciate that.
There's a, a point of, of explanation as well, being that I have family close with the, the fire department, and we listen to the calls quite regularly. I, I know in our township, if, if Essex Rescue is busy with two calls, which happens frequently, then the next service that comes is potentially St. Mike's or Richmond or Williston. So it's not a draw just solely on our resources, it's also on the, on the county's resources because we are not in the same position where South Burlington, fully staffed, also has Burlington right next door, fully staffed. So that, it, it's definitely something that we're gonna need to consider.
Commissioners, we have gone through the questions. Before we send it out to the public, I'd like to see if we have any initial thoughts, we synthesized any of the information, where our heads are right now. Trevor, I'm just gonna go to the line, Trevor. Any, any thoughts?
Well, no, I, I just wonder, you have a facility that's already full, but it seems like. but it seems like you're proposing a facility that's slightly bigger and will immediately be full. And so, I mean, why haven't you proposed a larger, uh, facility?
So one of the items that we look at as we start to get into more detail of the design is, does the site have capacity for more? So we're talking about the current population and the current beds. But part of our due diligence is to say, where is the future planning? Do we have the ability on the site if we needed to build more that we would look at? And I will give you an example, if I may, of the Springfield Correctional Facility and working with that community. We, we set a capacity, but we also designed in the infrastructure for the sewer and for the electrical, the capacity to build another, another wing if we needed to. So we made that investment upfront in that design. We've never built it, but we have the capacity within it. So it is part of our planning process. It is one of the items that we have to look at, but we have not made a final determination. Would you agree?
I would agree. I would also note that it's, you know, when, when building a new facility, this, my kids go to school in an old Macy's. And so, you know, when building an amazing facility like this one, you build it not only for the headcount known at that moment, but for both anticipated and at times you either have to expand or you find yourself sometimes with empty parts, because the headcount goes down a little bit. Overall, Vermont's student headcount has dropped. And so you are always trying to figure out what you're doing with regard to building to what the capacity is and what it will be.
Dusty?
I guess first off, I'd like to, I'd like to say thank you for bringing more, more detail, more transparency, because most of the, most everything was answered, or at least answered in a way that we could build off from. I'm particularly pleased to see that you've brought the additional information that Site 2 has risen to the, to the top. I, I would not have been, personally as one, one individual, I would not have been amenable to giving, giving an open, you know, permit to, to two different sites. And I didn't accept the argument that it wasn't cost effective to do the analysis ahead, because it is cost effective, because you know, you'll know it for something else. You'll have that to draw on for another development project if that comes to pass. So there's value in doing it, in knowing where it is. And you showed that by coming in with a different assessment.
You know, and thank you, Commissioner, for recognizing that. We heard, we heard this commission and we knew that was really important and we heard that from others. So, it, it was clear we needed to make that investment. And I, and it showed us a lot of information we didn't know. So, thank you.
I don't actually have a question. I just wanted to, if, if Site 2 is the site that you feel is more appropriate, my comment is that's a very dangerous road for walking or for biking or for any pedestrian infrastructure. So, an added sort of thought there that, that could be really important. Especially if there's people walking to a bus stop.
So, we've made note of that and that's something further that we can at least discuss internally and explore. We may not have all of the answers, but we can add that to our, our process.
I'm just going to note very quickly that I think we're seeing the sort of tension between intent and what can reasonably be codified. And I think, I think you have heard us that as a planning commission, our interest is always in things being able to be codified clearly and cleanly. So, in a hypothetical future, a development review board wouldn't have any sort of questions as to what our intent was and what the law said. But that is, I mean, that's, that's the challenge we're facing.
That's right. I agree.
Oh, great. Chair?
I guess ditto to what Dustin said. Thank you for answering the questions.
Great, I appreciate the time that you've put into both the, the statements that you sent to us and your answers here this evening.
And thank you for continuing the conversation with us.
Or I open up the public staff, or Catherine, do you have any?
Yeah, just, just one. Now, you're saying that Site 2 is preferable. Does that mean you'd be changing your zoning request, zoning change request? Or do you keep it open to Site 1?
So, we are, we've discussed this to be absolutely transparent. And, you know, we thought it would be a great opportunity to hear from you all if there was a preference. You know, we, at some point as we move forward, focusing on one site is in our, in our best interest. I think the more we learn about the, the land itself, we have concerns with Site 1. And if, if that would help this engagement and this public process, we would consider it.
Other thought?
Would you be interested in just having PC discussion at this point? Or do you want to take public?
I think I'd like to go to the public. Public came for this. So, I'm going to turn to the public and some ground rules. Catherine, yes.
Are, are you intending to have a speak question answer or more just receiving comment?
Uh, the intent is for this to be receiving comment. But if there, I mean, if there are questions of fact that can be easily answered, then.
So you'd like us to stay?
Yes, stay.
Thank you.
If that was your question, yes, please stay. So Catherine also has a timer for three minutes, because we, when, what time do we turn into a pumpkin in here, Catherine?
Nine.
Nine o'clock? Okay. So we'll try to get as many people as possible. We'd like a sort of preference for Essex residents first and three minutes. And ideally, no one would go again until everyone else who has wanted to speak.
Town residents first?
Town, yeah, Essex, Essex residents first, the preference. And with that, if you could, when you come up? Yes.
Chairman, I just a quick clarification. Are we, are we seeking general comments about the status of the, the concept of incarceration in general? Or are we looking at stuff that's specific to the site?
We'd like, we'd like to focus, as I said, that we can thank you for that clarifying question. As I said at the beginning, we would prefer if it focused on, and this is why I said Essex residents, pertaining to what we as a commission would have to deal with in terms of like the town plan, how this fits into the vision for the town. And have that be the preference. Essex residents talking about how this fits into Essex, the town plan, asking clarifying questions along that as opposed to general philosophical ideas about incarceration. All comments are welcome, but I'm, I'm saying a preference towards the comments that are Essex centric and town plan related. So, with that in mind, if you could come identify yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Jada Bearden. I've lived in Vermont since I was 18. I'm now 25. And I also live with bipolar disorder. On the evening of July 14th, 2025, I went to the UVM ER, it's the biggest ER. And I was no trespass from ER for a heel injury, injury. And also was picked up by Burlington PD. I do not live in Burlington. I live at the fort in the Ethan Allen, near Essex and Colchester. I was in no trespass from the ER. Then I was received a disorderly conduct. I know you're not a lawyer, so that's just a misdemeanor, it's not a felony. Then I was detained into the women's facility in South Burlington for one night. I received a shirt, a pants and an extra pants to hang myself. If you know the story of Sandra Bland, she did not commit suicide in prison, she was murdered. So, I just want to say, yes, you want to clarify for Essex residents, but I'm a young black person who lives in Vermont and I've given my time and energy to the beautiful Green Mountain State. But I, I experienced a trauma and I still have a court date coming up on the 25th of this month. And I still haven't received any, like, anything from Burlington, Essex or Colchester. So I just want to say that like prisons don't make us safe, they add more trauma. I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have experienced that. And if you can tell, like, I'm a very eloquent person, but I'm stuttering right now, because it's trauma lives in the body. And I also want to say that whether you add a, a glade candle scented, whatever aromatherapy, you cannot make a prison more peaceful. Like, you know what I mean? A cemented wall and natural lights won't do anything. I came, I came to that women's facility with a misdemeanor. It was, excuse me, I'm shaking. It was a disorderly conduct and I shouldn't have been detained overnight. When I, when I left that prison, I signed ER discharge papers. Do you know what I'm, I'm saying? Like, I wasn't ever committed with a crime. I've never been committed with a crime, but I was treated like a criminal. So imagine someone committed a crime, when they enter that prison, how would they be treated? As, I'm 25, I just got a prefrontal cortex, you know, I mean, like, it's, it's, like, it's, I'm very, a young, young person in Vermont. And white people get to send their people, their, their children to this town as 18 year olds and they don't have to worry about any of that. But I had to go through that. So that's all I want to say, thank you, I yielded my time.
Whoever's next?
Mr. Chair, there is one online as well.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Crystal. I wanted to speak to the corrections members. As I'm sure you know.
Your town residents, please?
I don't live in Essex, but I work with the Howard Center with Essex residents. Anyway, I wanted to quickly speak with you. So as I'm sure you know, Vermont's government has an official branch known as the Crime Research Group or CRG. And everything I'm about to say comes directly from them. They're a poll from the most recent report for 2024, based on an analysis of female offenders who serve more than 30 days in prison. This incredibly small population is who we're talking about when we discuss this $97 million prison and its goals. Now, I want to ask you three quick questions. Do you know the main cause of female incarceration for more than 30 days in Vermont? Yes or no? It's drug use. Do you know what the second main cause of female incarceration for more than 30 days is in Vermont? Yes or no? What you're planning, does anyone planning it know? Okay, it's public order violations. Now, does anyone know what the most common public order violation is? None of the, okay, it's violation of parole for drug use. So that means that the most common reasons Vermont women are incarcerated for long term is drug use and drug use again. So clearly incarceration is not solving this problem. It's not deterring drug use. It's not actually helping anyone there. And it doesn't seem like anyone on the commission is even aware of this, despite being the ones who are planning it. Now, this is what prison reform advocates like Freeher have been saying for years, only to be ignored. When you simply punish offenders and don't address the causes or risk factors, you fail to address the actual problem. Incarcerated here, women here in Vermont have, on average, 18 prior convictions and at least 3.5 years spent in prison. The data could not be clearer. We are punishing and repunishing the same people. And now you want to spend $100 million to do that again with drywall instead of concrete. That's not a solution. But now I want to also look at arrests. The most common cause of arrests across the state isn't drug use, it's something else. Do you, I'm going to guess you don't know, it's theft. Yes, what the aforementioned crime board, which you work with, notes is that in recent years, especially since COVID, theft has soared alongside the cost of utilities, rent and food in Vermont. Here in Essex, property taxes alone are more than 20% higher than they were two years ago. And it's working Essex and Vermont people as a whole who are paying the cost. People are being forced into poverty by these rising costs as education budgets are slashed. And again, you decide that we should, instead of putting this money into like supportive programs, we should build $100 million prison that'll have at most 163 people? No expansion of community support programs, no expansion of mental health services? Are, are you trying to fill it? Do you want to have more people forced into poverty to keep it full? It doesn't seem like this is actually thought out in a way that will actually help Essex or Vermont residents. So, or Essex residents. In short, to wrap up, the prison will not help those in need of support. It doesn't touch on the causes of any offenses. And if anything, it diverts money away from addressing them. If you want to stop crime here in Vermont and in Essex and support female offenders, programs are the way to go, not a new luxury prison. Thank you.
And you said that you're watching the.
Yeah, there is someone that's online.
Can we reiterate again, Essex residents first and impact for planning purposes?
And Essex town residents as well, not just.
Essex town residents. Correct.
In terms of the preference. Um, I see, is that Lorraine Zalum on?
That was the firsthand, yes.
That was the firsthand?
Yep.
Lorraine, can you hear us?
I, I can, can you hear me, Chair? Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate you taking my question. I was just looking at some of the trending. I was surprised to hear that in New York State, Comstock was just closed and they're planning on closing five prisons in New York State. And when I look at the stats in New York State from 1999, the prison population has fallen, I think it said 56%. And so, I have major concerns about dumping this kind of money into an carceral system as opposed to putting the money to root causes that would further reduce the population. Much better use of our money also for housing, which is one of the primary blocks to people being able to afford to live and not push themselves into crime. So in terms of Essex itself and the impact, if this trend continues, I don't see this as a good business to be putting into Essex, in terms of what happens when a prison leaves or ends or should we put our money to good use? Also note, despite what the president's been saying about Baltimore, Baltimore had invested the last couple of years some incredible amounts of funds into a number of different avenues, working with the police, working with mental health facilities, working with wraparound services. And they greatly reduced not only their crime rate, but the recidivism rate was shockingly low. I think it was below 5%. And really, the goal to me in terms of prison is to keep people out of prison supposedly. And when I see those kind of numbers, this is not the way. This seems like a developer's dream to me. And we have a governor who's a developer and I'm not happy to see that this is where we're putting funds as opposed to social services. And certainly post-COVID, we've seen a tremendous amount, increase in time, because we had poverty increase and we had crime go off the roof. We saw drug use soar, which is really, we're not treating drug use. And it should be the other way around. It's a health problem, not an carceral problem. We should be using this money to reduce the populations, not increase the population. And, and again, my tinfoil hat, when I look at how we have private prison systems, not in Vermont per se, but we do get paid when the federal government uses our prisons. It makes me wonder, are we trying to increase the population or reduce the population? Not happy about this. I don't think this is the way for Essex to go. And it is not a normal facility. The lighting that's required, the other things that are required for this type of building is not normal. And I'm also not happy to think that we're going to change our zoning reg just to accommodate this in this circumstance, when I don't know what the unintended consequences are. Personally think that we should have a moratorium while we're going through some of the new zoning regs. I appreciate your time and thank you.
At the microphone here, Essex resident?
I am, I live on Basia Drive. My name is Sue Gaddy. I'm going to second everything that Lorraine just said. I, I have a few things. The first one is question four. I have read a contract, I don't know if that has expired, in which the Vermont state has signed with the federal state that says that the Vermont correctional facilities will hold ICE detainees, whether they're coming from Vermont or they have come from Massachusetts or from New Hampshire or from anywhere in the Northeast or whatever they are being moved through. Because as, and we know that that's happening, there have been people that have been detained out of state that have been brought to CRCF. I know someone myself that was sent here from Massachusetts and then from here to Louisiana. I talked to her husband, the poor man, this woman that simply just got taken up, picked up by ICE and then moved from Massachusetts to here and then moved out at like 4 o'clock in the morning. So that is happening. I know it's happening because I've seen it happen. I've been to the airport with like other people that are here who are seeing this happening. So is, is it true that people, that, that people who are not from the state are going to be put into this correctional facility? Absolutely. There is a question about what happens when people are let out, like they've, when they're done with whatever time they have to be in prison, after time they just walk out. Always without a phone or a way to just simply contact their family. So that's another like answer there for you. Question 13. Apparently being in, being in Vermont in, in a correctional facility is better than being in any other place. Absolutely, sure, if you're from Vermont and then you can have contact with your legal aid and with your like family and emergency contacts. But again, the people that are being moved through here are moved like late in the, in the evening or very early in the morning and in the weekends, so they cannot have due process. They can, they're not talking to lawyers, they're not talking to family, they're not talking to their emergency contacts. So, you do with that what you may. I, like, when I came here earlier today, I was thinking about Charlie Kirk being assassinated yesterday. And then, as horrible as that is. And then, as horrible as that is, within hours, the administration, Trump, is out saying that the radical left is responsible for this horrible violence and that they're going to come for anyone that basically stands up to the administration. So I'm assuming a bunch of people in this room could end up in a facility. Let's not build more facility and systems for crazy authoritarian people that end up in power to use against us. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go online. I see Susan.
Thank you. Susan Tone, 296 West Sleepy Hollow Road. So I'm trying to really stick with what the commissioner asked us to do, which is to not address the incarceration system and wanting to find alternatives. As a social worker, I'm a firm believer in diversion. So I would be a fan of diverting and not putting women in prison. That being said, having watched the news report about the conditions at the women's correctional facility in South Burlington, it was appalling. I, you know, just seeing the mold and the water and thinking that we are putting anyone in that position seems entirely inhumane to me. I think that if the issue is that we have to build a new facility, if that's what the state is deciding and the legislature and Department of Corrections is deciding, and that's what we're talking about, then I would want a trauma-informed facility. I would want clinical staff that I am happy to work with as someone who is a trauma-informed professor and practitioner to make sure that that facility is something that is rehabilitative. And I know that the main recidivism rates from their facility are really significantly low. And so there is data that shows that this kind of facility actually lowers recidivism. And so I would just say, I feel like this is the first meeting that I've been able to stay up for. And so I appreciate everybody coming. And I just want us to be addressing the question at hand, which is whether or not it makes sense for it to be in Essex. And my feeling is, and my understanding, is that Essex has an inclusion policy and wanting to bring diversity to Essex and to be welcoming. And I can't think of a better way to be welcoming towards these women in this facility than to bring it to Essex. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so in the room. First of all, it's... Is there an Essex resident?
No, my name is Hughes Sichel.
Wait, hold up for a second. Do we have any Essex residents who are waiting in line who would like to speak? Please come to the microphone if you are an Essex resident and would like to speak.
I would suggest that you make a more formal system then, if you want Essex residents to go first at first, unlike the guidelines that we have received from the spokespeople here. It's my suggestion.
Essex, please form a line. Essex residents. Please proceed.
My name is Brian Clifford. I live at 6 Tanglewood Drive in Essex. I guess, first of all, I would like to increase diversity in our community as well. But I do not want people to have to be convicted of crimes to do so. I wrote a letter, which I submitted. I hope you look at it. Basically outlines the fact that I don't think bringing a prison into Essex fits the spirit of the town plan based on the reality that prisons in Vermont under the leadership of the DOC are sites of abuse and discrimination based on race, gender, nation of origin, and ability and other things. So just kind of plus one on all that stuff I wrote. Also, I'm really concerned about the environmental impacts and how that conflicts with the town plan. I had a bunch of stuff about here on Site 1, which I guess I can skip now because that's not the preferred site. But both sites were classified as having bad environmental impacts by the state. I don't think we should just like breeze over that. We should take a closer look. At Site 2 is right next to Wildlife Corridor. It has steep slope issues. There's something in there about the pad, the building pad being wet. It's my understanding that no environmental experts have looked at this. There's been no site walkthrough. So I think that before we go adding uses to the districts, we should look at this stuff more. And just generally, like Site 1, we should absolutely not be building a prison on anything that's zoned for residential. We need more housing. Specifically, we need more subsidized housing. Hundreds of people in Chittingon County are homeless. Thousands more are a missed paycheck or two away from being homeless. So the Planning Commission can't really impact like reducing the need for prisons in a lot of ways. But making sure we have housing is one of them. And one last thing. Please check out this bill that Representative Brian Sheena and Free Her have partnered on. I think it's House Bill H456, and it outlines a plan to phase out the women's prison through a creation of community-based network of residential treatment programs, secure housing, job training, and pathways to stable housing and employment. So the Department of Corrections builds prisons. So they're going to tell us that the only way to fix our problems is to build a prison. But I don't think there... I think there's another way. Thank you. Bye.
I'm Mark Redmond. I live in Essex. The other day was the 10th anniversary of the death of Laura Sobel. And if you remember her, she was a wife, mother, and a social worker who worked for the Department of Children and Families. And she was leaving her office in Barry when she was met by Jody Herring. And Jody Herring had a shotgun and fired two bullets into the head of Laura Sobel and killed her. A very courageous man wrestled away the shotgun and called the police. The next day, the police went to Jody Herring's home and discovered three more dead bodies. She had killed her aunt, her cousin, and her grandmother because she was upset that they had called DCF on her. So Jody Herring has been in prison for the last 10 years. Do I believe that our society has wrought some terrible injustice against Jody Herring? No, I do not. I think she belongs exactly where she is. How about Patricia Prue? Do you remember that name? In 2012, Patricia Prue and her husband lured a St. John'sbury Academy teacher named Melissa Jenkins under false pretenses. And she drove there with her two-year-old son, and they strangled her to death and dumped her body in the Connecticut River. The police discovered her body the next day, and then the two-year-old son, who was alive, in the car in the cold. We don't live in a world of bubblegum, lollipops, and unicorns. We live in a world where I believe most people are good. But there are dangerous people in the world who have done horrible things, who need to be separated from society. And the place where they go is called a prison. The prison they're at now, I've been to several times. It's really in bad shape. We need a new prison. It should be trauma-informed. It should be a decent place to live. And I live in Essex, and I have no problem at all with being placed in Essex. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Beth Redmond. I'm a former state representative for this town, the town of Essex. And I also have worked with incarcerated women in the correctional facility, both when the women were up in Swanton as well as the women at the CRCF. I co-founded a writing program with the women and have sat next to Jody Herring, actually, and written with her in my writing circles in the women's correctional facility. The women there are, as you well know... I also want to say that I was a co-author of the White Paper that was written more than 10 years ago about the horrendous conditions there. We need a new facility. We need a trauma-informed, gender-responsive facility. I do believe that's a possibility. I know there are a lot of people in this room who don't feel that's possible. And I support their view that we need more community programs. We need more housing. We need more funding for programs. We need longer treatment programs that are subsidized. We need all of those things. But we also need a facility in this state. And every community that DOC has gone to has rejected a facility, every single one. Newberry has rejected it. And the women sit in the facility and continue to have no programming, no employment training. There are so many things they are missing out on to change and transform their lives. So I, you know, I don't know whether Essex is the right place. I'm very heartened to hear that DOC has gone down to one preferred location. I've been pushing for that all along. I think asking two locations to be changed zoning was too big an ask. I think that this is a good thing. One thing, is Essex the right? Is that the right location? I don't know. I appreciate the deeper questions that all of you are asking. I feel, just from the quality of the questions tonight, that you are doing your homework. You're studying the issue, and you're asking good questions. And I'm also hearing from Wanda and the new commissioner that they want to collaborate and work together. So I am so hopeful. I'm holding a vision in this state that we can actually collaborate and work together and create something new that has never been created before. Everyone says, oh, the women's prison. We have never had a trauma-informed, gender-responsive prison in this state. The women have just ended up with what's left over. I support this in Essex, and thank you for all of your due diligence.
I'm Lisa Goodrich from Essex. And there are so many questions I have. The first question I'm going to ask is... Or first, I'm going to present a concern. We've already been looking at some traffic issues around another proposed development. And there are issues around fire and police being able to get there if there's an issue because we do not have the structure, infrastructure, excuse me. And we haven't seen any plans. We don't know anything. So that's a concern right off the bat for me. If a fire engine couldn't get up to the other proposed facility and have two separate entrance and exit, how is there going to be one for this parcel? Another concern I have, besides my personal one, which is I am... I'm not afraid of the woman who came up here and spoke. But I do not want to live half a mile from some of the women that were discussed. I don't want them as my neighbors. I'll be honest. Do I think that they deserve a healthy place in which to live? Sure, I do. You know, we don't live in a medieval society. On the other hand, I feel like this is on the back of those of us who live nearby. The state owns the money, everybody likes to say. We'll be saving the state money. But at whose expense? The expense of a few of us? Is the state willing to buy our neighborhood out? We've already lived through trauma here in Essex. My daughter's teacher was shot and killed, and I believe that man is now living in Essex, likely. Okay, you say no. And yet we now have... And you call it a rehabilitative center, but that's where we place all the people who are medicated. And I know he was determined to be criminally insane. So I don't know. So I don't want that. I don't want that for my neighbors. I don't want that for the young people that have come here. We want young people to come here. And yet, I have a neighbor who came back home, is bringing in money from out of state because she's employed from out of state. In fact, my husband is now too. We don't care to live next to that. And I have to ask one question quickly because I viewed a video of you speaking to senators last February saying that we welcome you. I don't know who's welcoming this partnership. I don't think it's everyone. And this doesn't mean that we're hateful people. It doesn't mean that we're not hopeful people. But I don't think this is the right sighting, and I know you have money to purchase land elsewhere. Why not use this land for low-income housing?
Still no other online. Okay, no online. All right. Proceed.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Van Eppes. I live in Essex Town. Sorry, I can't see very well. I don't have my reading glasses. That's okay, thanks. I had some questions I wrote down to add to what you were talking about. Question eight. Guest traffic, I saw the times were from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. I was wondering for weekdays or weekends? And who are they expecting to be guest visitations? The family? And I'm wondering, how does that relate to the bus transportation? I could have sworn that on the weekends, the bus is not making the loop on weekends. Question 11. So I'd like you to check into that place. Let me go through because I only have three minutes. Question 11. What number of these women? I saw that you're looking into the demographics of these women. What number of them have caregiving duties? Are we disrupting their families Are we disrupting their families as a result of their incarceration? What will this trauma-informed facility do to meet those needs? Those responsibilities of theirs? I wanted to address what was discussed. I do not see prison as a place of healing. I see prison as a place of oppression. At the place to silence voices of dissent. I am a survivor of medical trauma, medical error, or fun. After a traumatic brain injury, I had reconstruction surgery on my skull. They didn't think it deserved an overnight stay on a pain med drip. They sent me home, and I still suffer pain and now a chronic pain sufferer. I've suffered trauma in the hands of those who were supposed to be serving me. I want you to understand what trauma looks like. I suffer PTSD. I suffer TBI. And so some of my questions are, do you know how prevalent TBI is in the incarcerated population? It's extremely high. Studies say something like 80%. In one case, a whole prison, the entire population. What are we doing for this trauma-informed facilities? Are we going to increase because of the shortage of health professionals who treat TBI and PTSD? Are we going to assure that there are going to be enough health professionals available for neuro-psyche evaluations for these patients, for these incarcerated persons? Case managers? Brain injury care professionals like SLPs, OTs, PTs, vocational rehab, mental health? Are you going to ensure that? Because I don't believe you can call it trauma-informed unless you do. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name's Tara Miller. I'm an Essex resident, live on Chapin Road. To answer your question, I don't think that having a prison fits with my view of the town and what I would like to see for the town of Essex. I don't want a prison in my community or anyone else's community. And I think it's notable that this prison keeps being talked about as a facility, as a building. I don't hear folks saying the word prison, and that's what it is. I don't believe that building cages for our neighbors is how we should be dealing with crises in housing affordability and mental health care and substance use. And that's what a prison is, is cages that we are putting our neighbors in, our fellow Vermonters in. And is that how we want them to be supporting people? Is that supportive? It's not. Add on top of that, the complicity of CRCF and other Vermont prisons in supporting and collaborating with federal law enforcement to incarcerate and deport many of our community members, especially immigrants, people of color, and activists. That's about 600 immigrants who have passed through Vermont prisons in 2025 and 250 through CRCF in particular. This is not a system that is, is working. There is no such thing as a trauma-informed prison. You may hear that again and again, and that is a lie. There is no such thing as a trauma-informed prison. You can't paint the walls pink. You can't use softer materials, whatever that means, softer materials for women. That will not make trauma go away. Incarceration is inherently dehumanizing and traumatic. Not to mention that prisons aren't even a cost-effective solution. This new prison would cost $97 million. Imagine all the good we could actually do in our communities with that money. Funding housing, health care, climate resilience. The amount that we're talking about, our infrastructure, our roads, our emergency, emergency services that need funding from the state. Why is, is, why are we not going to the state of Vermont and saying that that's what we want funding for and not trying to get it in negotiations and by selling out our community and taking in a prison? It is less expensive to provide people with supportive housing and wraparound services, and that's what we should be doing. Let's not keep making the same mistakes and wasting money on a broken system that perpetuates so much pain and trauma. I oppose the building of a new prison in Essex or anywhere.
There is one online. Mr. Chair, there is one online. Rachel, online. You're recognized.
Thank you. It's Rachel Lazott, Sage Circle in Essex. I echo a lot of the concerns that some of my neighbors have, but I'd like to focus on a few things that I think are particularly important for the board to consider. Specifically, the zoning change, obviously, this is the crux of the issue. And I, I would just like to say that, you know, once zoning is changed, that opens precedent to allow other state-owned facilities in the town of Essex. And what is to prevent a private prison company from coming to build on that land if the state abandons their plans? The zoning has been changed, and there's been changes, I guess, to the town plan that potentially would take years to review. You know, what kind of controls are in place to stop that? And is intent enough for the planning commission to, to lose that, you know, precedent? And I just also want to remind the board, there was a discussion during the Amazon discussions in front of the Development Review Board that I believe someone spoke up and said, you know, that you're asking the Essex Rescue and Essex Fire Department to come all the way down Sand Hill, make a sharp left turn on 117, and then go all the way back up essentially the same hill in all kinds of weather conditions. There are not two access points to that site, nor are there in the, you know, in the RPDI district. And then also, I am a little concerned about the low number of med calls listed on the list. I, I, I don't have any data to support this, but I would just question, you know, how many women are being transported to the hospital? They must be transported to give birth if they're pregnant. If someone breaks a bone, I'm assuming they have to be transported. I think that, that, that number seems low to me. And when transports happen, if Essex Rescue is involved, that takes away their ability to respond to emergencies. What if there is an emergency at the school and they are all at the prison? That takes away from the children of this town. And I'd also like to talk about bus service. Bus service is being cut everywhere. The, that route is being threatened to be cut altogether, from my understanding from the paper. And I just don't understand how all of a sudden bus service is going to materialize through that corridor when the state isn't willing to put in money now to resuscitate that bus service. The state did just admit during this meeting that they want more space up, sorry, new topic, that they want more space up there to potentially build other buildings, that that's part of the, that would be part of their objective. So I think that's really important for the planning commission to take into consideration. How, how, how many more buildings can that area sustain with one exit point and one entrance point for emergency vehicles? And I'd also really like the planning commission to focus on the differences. Yeah.
Rachel, I don't know if you heard, but the three-minute buzzer did go off.
That's fine. I'm sorry I didn't hear. Thank you.
All right.
Before I start, I'd just like to ask, is there any other Essex residents that would like to speak before me in, you know, respect of the guidelines here?
Good call.
Of course. And thank you for lining up.
Absolutely.
Hi, my name is Hugh Sichelle, and I'm a South Burlington resident and a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. Thank you to all the speakers before me. Your words were powerful and evocative. I want to start off by saying that I vehemently oppose the building of this prison. I'm extremely disappointed to see that the state has pursued the creation of a new institution of incarceration in my backyard. The reasons why this project would be bad for the community are numerous, as those before me have mentioned, but I'd like to highlight some aspects that I find particularly galling. The Trump administration is at war with the working class in this country, and nowhere has that been more clear than its crackdown on immigrants. Every week at the current women's prison, immigrant women are moved in and out of CRCF, then shuttled off, shuttled often in the dark of night to the airport to be sent to another detention facility or to be deported. As we've heard here tonight, no assurances have been made for these practices to cease. For a state government that pays lip service to resisting the Trump regime, this is an insidious way of giving tacit support to the human rights abuses it claims to oppose. Tell me, does the town of Essex align itself with Trump's values of cruelty and domination? Or does it stand with the community and defend them from their abuses? My thoughts also turn to Vermonters struggling with addiction and homelessness. It would cost, as we've heard, $97 million to build this new prison, and it would be a continued $95,000 per year cost per person incarcerated. The annual cost of incarcerating a Vermonter is nearly five times more expensive than supportive housing with wraparound services through pathways. The cost of recovery houses in Vermont are on average 75% lower than the cost of incarceration. Prisons do not help or rehabilitate their residents. They traumatize them further and leave them less able to return to society after they leave. Prisons do not address the underlying causes of crime and poverty. There are numerous ways that the state could be helping its residents who need it the most with this money, but building this prison would send the message that Vermont simply does not care about them. This prison represents the worst impulses of the state, and I believe that this community will not stand for this. Vermonters of principle are standing up for what's right and just in opposing its construction. Thank you. I yield my time.
All right, before I go, I'm also not an Essex resident, so if there's anyone who would like to speak before me, I'm outside. Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Aspen. Evening commissioners, I wanted to speak to some of the points made that the Department of Corrections made with regards to ICE, oh, sorry, with regards to ICE at this facility and immigration detainees at, at CRCF and at the proposed facility. So, so, so currently, I, CRC, I can speak to what CRCF is currently. Currently, CRCF is a vital role in ICE's operation Vermont, in Vermont and across the entirety of New England. Since January alone, over 200, as people have said before, over 250 women have been taken from their homes, workplaces, cars, streets, and community spaces and kept in CRCF by ICE before being taken to places, to more restrictive and dehumanizing places in the South. And so Department of Corrections made a lot of claims about, made a lot of claims about ICE and immigration detainees in this current, in the proposed facility and in the current facility, and they claim that this is a benefit and that having people here in Vermont is a benefit. This is true for people who are detained in Vermont, right? It is helpful to be detained close to your community. However, that is, that, however, ICE also knows this. ICE knows that it's helpful, that is helpful to immigrants and is hurtful to ICE's cause to have immigrants housed in their communities, which is why ICE tends, ICE tends to house people from Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New Hampshire in CRCF. They have taken, sorry, and they are taken from these places, separated from their families. I've talked to, I've talked to a husband who had no idea where his wife went until, until organizers went through CRCF's detainees list and found, and researched and reached out to him separately. CRCF made no attempt to accommodate these detainees, made no attempt to take care of them, made no attempt to have humane treatment for them, right? And used, and ICE uses CRCF to, as a confused, as a tactic to confuse families and immigrants. And so, this, and so despite, and so despite the claims of the DOC that capacity is a prime reason why they don't take ICE detainees, this is not true. A steady stream around, of up to around 10 to 15 women have been held in CRCF, again, largely from out of, out of state already and brought in to CRCF before then being held for potentially only a week or a week or less before being shuttled off, right? And so, sorry, I'm trying to see if I have anything else. One woman was taken from Connecticut, separated from her doctor, separated from her crucial medically diagnosed antibiotics that she needed to prevent an infection. And so the new facility, I'm going to stick to the new facility. This new facility likely would not change that. Hector Mirad gave no inclination that this would change it. Sorry, I'll finish up my comment. And that this new facility would almost certainly not, this would continue to place Essex would, sorry, would start to place Essex as a home for the Trump, for immigration detention. And that, I think that's not a great thing to do. Thank you.
Yep. Come to the.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Wendy James, Essex Town. I know that we have a zone for corrections already, and what's before you is asking you to add a zone for corrections. I don't know if you've looked at the previous zone for corrections that we have with the 10.2 acres down where Ex-Woodside is. You didn't mention whether that was viable or not viable, or whether you even looked at that. I'm just interested, since we already have a zone for corrections, whether that was looked at or not. That's all I have for a question.
Come in.
It's currently a facility that is operating for Department of Corrections.
Is it anywhere down there? Is that not enough for what you're?
I would say that it's not enough for what is, what is needed for all of the programming.
Yeah, River Valley Therapeutic Residence takes up all of the buildable area in that, in that 10.2 acres.
But John indicated that these, Site 2, you could, you, you might be able to build up. So why couldn't that be done at the River Valley? Just that it's, I don't expect an answer.
The, I, 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 what, what we're, we've already built out at the capacity of that existing site in what, what some of you refer to as Woodside. And so we've already built out at that. And, and it's different use as well as far as the, of the services that are being provided there. Does that help?
Yes, that helps.
Provide clarity. Thank you.
Yep. Yep. All right, thank you.
You have someone online. I have someone online. Gina? Gina, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now? Yeah. Okay. I'm an Essex resident. I live on Sand Hill Road. So if it's the Saxon Hill site that you're talking about, is that the preferred site? Did I understand that? Is it the Saxon Hill site or the Susie Wilson-Hite site that they?
The River Road site, but yes, that's, that's Site 2 that we're talking about.
Okay. So I live near there. I live on Sand Hill Road. She even used Sand Hill Road in her description, and she described it as a typical building. I would sort of hope it's not a typical building. I would think it would need different type of fencing around it. I would think it would need the light pollution itself. I would think, I would think you would need more lighting than a, than a typical building. So I, I have concerns that it was called a typical building in the earlier conversation. I have concerns about traffic going down the hill onto River Road. As a local resident, we already have a ton of traffic that is on a curve, and it is, there's empty lots there that will be populated with different businesses that will, we have not mitigated the traffic already for the light up to Sand Hill Road and then the North Wilston Road, which I think there is a proposed light that will go there. So that is the technical issues I have with it. And then I also have huge concerns where this country is going and how prisons will be used over the next three to four years and ICE and all that. I'm the mother of an immigrant. I adopted a child from another country, so I have concerns with that. And I, I agree with what many people have already said. My other issue is how the beds are divided. I think it's 30 beds are for reentry and the rest are for incarceration. I get maybe the whole facility will be definitely nicer than South Burlington. The people of South Burlington deserve a better place to be. But if we zoned for a rehab center, if we zoned for other services that helped many of the people in the South Burlington prison, they wouldn't need to be in that facility. They could be in job reentry programs, job trading programs. There are other things we could spend $100 million on other than a prison in my town. Thank you.
Let me go here first because you have already spoken. If you don't mind, then you can be next. Yeah, you, you're all good.
Hi, my name is Yvonne Bospine. I am in the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I work at Howard Center. We serve Chittenden County, including Essex. Work in harm reduction and recovery. And it sounds like if we make the mistake of approving this zoning expansion, then I will be serving another 160 Essex residents. A lot of the folks who exit incarceration come to our site to receive services because they're dropped off without any particular plan in place. I've worked now extensively with Department of Corrections on trying to implement recovery plans, and I can tell you that the training isn't there. I can tell you that there will be no difference with this facility. I think, I appreciated Marad bringing up the concept of capacity. I think we're all very protective of our capacity. Essex, Essex working class, you know, working two jobs, you've got kids at home, you want to get home as a social worker, I want to get home, and very invested in what the most efficient route for service delivery is for our folks who are struggling with addiction and homelessness. I know it's not a prison. I know that when the South Burlington prison was opened, that I saw an enormous sea change in the level of burnout that I had as a social worker. I'm really excited by democracy. I really like that the select board is happening here in a school where people have the chance to give public comment. It's very open and accessible to the community. It's not accessible to the 160 people whose lives will be altered by working, by working, you know, free labor at this prison. And unfortunately, they can't be here. I get to talk to a lot of those folks who'll be transferred every day, and I'm, and I'm excited to say, I got to pull a little bit at the office today. Nobody was excited about the idea of another prison being built because they understand that these 160 people aren't being transferred from some, some overcrowded prison that exists now. They're being pulled from the streets, they're being pulled from their families. We get to decide as, you know, we said, not to try to avoid to talk about philosophy, but this is a board that gets to decide how many Vermont babies are born with their mother. mother in handcuffed to the bed of a, of a hospital. That's, that's really exciting. And I think that we shouldn't throw away that opportunity and, and recognize that these bureaucratic structures of zoning exist so that we can have a say as to whether this is a fit for our community. And I don't think I want more Vermont babies bored with their mom in handcuffs. I think that might probably cause the problem that they're profiting off of right now. Uh, and so in order to stop some of those, some of, some of this recreation of the same problems, uh, in order to just help my work, um, with Essex counties working, uh, not Essex, Essex working class, we all deserve Essex county. Um, I would, I would appreciate, uh, that the county, that, that we work together as Vermont to continue the trend we've done, which is to disallow the Vermont-wide impact of creating, uh, space for prisons. I'll throw in also that, uh, when they segregated J Unit, because there were inmates who were translating for folks because Department of Corrections was unable to provide that service, that was an indication of the type of treatment that they were willing to provide for immigrants. There would be no difference here, or any planned difference according to the panelists.
Mr. Chair, there isn't anybody else online? I'm just giving you a time check of eight forty-seven.
Okay, eight forty-seven, all right.
Hopefully, these are two quick questions. You may not be able to answer them tonight, I don't know. One is, a year ago, was it September or October when we had the meeting here? Anyway.
September.
September, year ago. Um, I spoke with another gentleman that was from your team. And I said, "Well, why can't you rehab the site in South Burlington?" He said, "That's not possible. That land is not usable. We cannot use it." Yet, in that same February video, you state that you plan to use it for a men's step-down facility. So I'm very confused by that. And I, I, I think it's important to bring it out here in public. Um, and now let's see if I can remember the other thing. Um, I think it was Vermont Digger put out an article this week talking about the Springfield Prison and how there's not funding. That's always an issue. We can have great dreams. If we don't have the funding, we can't actually make things happen. And, uh, there's not enough transportation for them to get home, and that they're walking on the street. And that sort of reiterated a concern for me that a neighbor brought forth, whose nephew works as a state police officer and makes tons of runs to South Burlington on a daily basis, bringing prisoners, not prisoners, I shouldn't call them prisoners, sometimes prisoners, sometimes people who are being detained, et cetera, et cetera. Um, he said that even if they come to bring them home, that if someone's being released, they don't have to accept the ride. So where do those people go? What are we accomplishing? And, and I think these are questions we need answered as well.
Hi, I'm Tamara Cole, and I've worked in the criminal justice system in Vermont for like thirty years.
President, ma'am.
Um, Montpelier. Um, but I've worked in doing that, I work in the public defender system, and I've been in all the prisons, including the women's prison. And, um, to a person, everybody, the people who are incarcerated are, are poor, are, have been, come from a cycle of abuse and neglect and need housing, need affordable food, need really good schools. We do not need to take a million, uh, not, how much?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven million dollars to create another facility to lock people up when we need to, we could take that money, one, to rehab the facility they're, they're in. And also, I think half the people, and I might not have the numbers right, in the women's, um, facility are waiting, it's pre-trial, it's because they can't make bail, which is a completely unfair system. I mean, uh, so people are in there because they're waiting for, you know, for hearings and, um, so, so the money can be used to, uh, rehab the facility and also to create facilities that are for health, uh, mental health, how, affordable housing, um, affordable food, and things like that. There's, there's nobody that I, that I worked with, and I've worked with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of defendants who didn't come from a cycle of poverty and abuse, and poverty or poverty and abuse, and they didn't get the services that we could be giving them with the ninety-seven million dollars.
My name's Christina Lear. I'm a resident of Montpelier, and I'm here because I'm a resident of this state, and as was mentioned, this is a statewide issue. And I know that we're not, you asked us not to speak to our philosophy about this, but I think that it's important that we take note of the fact that people have talked about this plan has been rejected over and over in place after place. And maybe there's a reason for that. Prisons and police were literally created to control populations of color and poor people, and we're doing the same thing now with them, as been stated by people endlessly tonight. And we have an opportunity here, you all have an opportunity here. You know, budgets and plans are our imagined future, right? And so what do we want in our community and what do we want for the people who we may or may not know, but we may know in the future? And, you know, thirty years ago, they were called progressive and rehabilitative, and today they're called trauma-informed, and we use Scandinavia as an example. We are not a socialist country. We don't let people out of Scandinavian prisons into a community where they have healthcare and education and housing. So it's a totally false pretense. It's a completely false pretense. We're looking at Vermont, one-fifth of Vermonters losing their healthcare if the policies come down that have, that when the, when the things get enacted. We have an opportunity in this moment if we just want to take a look at what we might do. There are a handful of people who are serving long-term sentences that are in the correctional facility right now. What if we took those thirteen people, I think it is, and we actually looked at what it was like to care for them and create opportunities for them? It would be a whole lot cheaper, as everybody has talked about, and it might be a model that we could build on. Like, maybe we actually have enough, maybe there's a reason that we need to talk about the philosophy. If we build this thing, all we're gonna do is fill it. We do, it happens over, talking about building systems so that we can build bigger means we have to justify putting more people behind bars. I am a mother, I am a woman, I am a daughter. I, I am here because it, I feel the indignity of what it means to be part of a system where I willingly am part of sep- where, where we are willingly separating people from each other. And I don't want to be a part of that, and that's why I come and I use my voice here, and it's why I come and I listen to other people who care to, because this is how we get to do it in a democracy. So thank you.
Chair, it's five minutes to nine.
Hi, my name is Maggie Pierce. I'm a social worker and educator in Burlington, but I've spent some extensive time in CRCF. For the past like three years, we've ran a group out of there, um, so I'm very familiar with the poor conditions. I have two questions I'd like DOC to answer for us tonight. The first is, we've heard nebulously that, uh, the conditions are poor. Can you name exactly what it is that makes it so that we can no longer use CRCF as a facility, and we have to, you know, create another one according to your own testimony? And two, my understanding is that CRCF used to have a reentry program very similar to the one you're proposing, but it was under-maintained and overrun. What is DOC willing to commit to, to make sure that this program continues to happen? And who are the community partners, the employment agencies and such, that will help make that vision happen, as opposed to just willing it into existence? Thank you. And you have committed to answer, so, if you'd like.
I would say as far as what makes it unsuitable now, I mean, obviously the women are still there, and it just, we don't have the space that we need, um, that we could do so much better in terms of like what the rooms are like, not having bunks, you know, smaller. Flexibility around vocational training, um, better opportunities for family visiting, just a number of things that, that really would improve the overall situation for the women. And then, I'm sorry, what was this?
Reentry. The second one was about the programming. Yeah, I understand, like, working fields has us closed. He was a huge supporter of that. So who to look to to do that?
Right. Well, we have Vermont Works for Women inside the facility, and they also, you know, have their community component, and we work both with them and vocational services that are state employees. And we are working towards doing a work release program with the women currently. Um, and, you know, it's something that we're developing with an eye towards having the, the new reentry facility where it would be an opportunity for more of the women.
Can you speak to why the current location is unsustainable for just reforming that facility?
It's, the land is so small, and actually, well, my BTS friend can answer that question.
Hi, sure. So the existing facility, we have underslab drainage problems as well as supply issues with electrical and, and plumbing. And because of the way that facility was constructed, we would need to demolish it to fix those issues. We can't do that while the facility is operating. And the site is not large enough for us to build another facility while we, we'd have to operate a facility and build another facility in the same site. The site isn't large enough for that, as well as the site itself is not large enough for the new facility to fit all of the, the main issue is the programming space. We don't have programming space, we don't have space for vocational training, and we, and the site, we'd have to go, once again, multi-story with that, and that's not the desire of the Department of Corrections.
Regarding the transition piece, it's not dissimilar to what happened in Burlington. I, you know, I made somewhat humorous reference to the fact of where my kids go to school versus this high school, but that's what happened in Burlington. The need to demolish that structure and recreate a structure, but you have to have something in between.
And I think those intentions sound good. But I do, and I believe that there is potential for creation of those kind of programs, but I do kind of want to emphasize that we, um, when we were first brought to the facility, we were given a tour of the, um, entire facility, and they brought us to the mental health unit, um, which was solitary, painted pink. Um, they called it the hole. And I feel like that's just a good example of how these efforts and these intentions can become kind of misguided and put to the side for, um, kind of concerns of the extension. So I want to encourage, if this goes forward, all of you to really focus on that mission when you are kind of codifying it. Codifying this, beyond detention.
Could you also state your name for the record?
I'm Emily. Emily's our best volunteer. I'm also part of, um, we're part of, can I say the name? Nope.
Usually name and loc- name and...
Last name, please.
Last name and residence.
Emily Stakesh, um, I'm from Burlington. Thank you.
Catherine, it is well nigh on nine o'clock. What are our space and time limitations?
We can probably push it for ten minutes.
And, okay, so, at, at... All right.
So we have, we have to be out of here at ten. These guys got to take everything down before ten. So that, that is our space limitation.
So what I would propose, we have, yeah, and then we need at the end to bring it back to the table to get a sort of sense of the commission. So, yeah, with that in mind, proceed.
Thank you. My name's Ashley Smith.
Listen, we're gonna go. Yeah, two minutes. That should get through everybody.
My name's Ashley Smith. I'm from Burlington. I'm here from Burlington because this is not just an Essex question, it's not just a Vermont question, it's a national question. If you look at what the Trump administration is doing, it is gutting the services, Medicaid, all the social services that would address the root causes of, of crime, which are poverty, drug addiction. We're gonna get more of that because of what the Trump administration is doing. Paired with that, he is ramping up policing, ICE attacks, deployment of the National Guard, building new detention facilities, ramping up the construction of private prisons. These are the priorities that Vermont should reject, period. And we should be proud that town after town is saying, "No, we do not want a prison in our backyard." Not just because we don't want it in our backyard, because prisons don't work to address the problems that cause crime. In fact, they make them worse. The justifications for building this jail, this prison in Essex make no sense. Look at the existing jail. Everybody agrees that should be torn down and never be rebuilt. That's a barbaric situation in that jail. That shouldn't be replaced with a kinder, gentler jail, which is an oxymoron, a contradiction in terms. Instead, the nearly one hundred million dollars that will be wasted on throwing people's lives away should be invested in social services, healthcare, jobs programs, educations. That's the kind of Vermont I want to live in. We should not make the mistake that other states are making, building jails. I grew up in upstate New York. I know what jails do to communities. They wreck the community, and they wreck the lives of people who are thrown in jail and treated like animals. That's not the Vermont, nor the US, nor the world that I want to live in.
Hi, my name's Reverend Laura Engelken, and I live in Essex Junction. So, adjacent, very close. Um, for me, one of the big pieces, I, I agree with not reinvesting more into the carceral state, and it feels like this is a failure of imagination that will come at the expense of Vermont communities, including Essex. I find it very interesting that it feels like the priority is a building and not people. So, and, and the examples that, that I took from tonight are, say, the, the busing. Well, that'll figure out, we'll figure that out later, as opposed to say there are funds set aside in this project to ensure that there is an extension of the bus process. Also thinking about what is the intentional, uh, effort that's built into this program that's gonna ensure that individuals are able to get to their places of work for this reentry program? Which it is interesting, someone noted that by far, this is much more a jail than a reentry if you look at that, the percentage of beds and attention. So, so I think my, my encouragement to you all is the planning commission is to consider how this project comes at the expense of Essex community as well as the greater Vermont and pieces. But I think in particular, I'm not sure what benefit there is for Essex, regardless of the philosophical perspectives. I think the impact, uh, is not really thought of. So, thanks.
Hi, everyone. My name is Gina Ossoff, and for transparency, I'm the director of FreeHer Vermont. Thank you for the public comment period tonight. I did prepare something formal.
Where are you from, please?
I'm from Colchester, Vermont. Um, I did have something formally prepared for you, but I think it's more important to address some of the things that were talked about tonight. So I may hop around a little bit, but I, I just want to hit home on the point that this, the promises of a reentry facility and robust programming is something that we're all, especially at FreeHer, concerned about if this will actually come to fruition, particularly just from a policy standpoint. So detainees make up more than fifty percent of our prison population, but as things currently are, there's no formal policy to ensure they receive services. So when we talk about prison being a warehouse, this is in fact the reality for detainees. So if over fifty percent of the population are detainees, are they not gonna have access to this reentry facility? Like, I, I don't understand how we're gonna have this promised programming, especially when we've had discussions about this with the Department of Corrections, and the problem is that their caseworkers are full-time facilitating virtual court. So not even sentenced people are getting help with finding housing after, transportation after. There's not really anyone available to help them with some kind of treatment plan. Um, and also I'm concerned about the discussions about entering a working group with the town of Essex. FreeHer is one of the members of the stakeholder group, and we've been having very similar conversations for over a year. I would say the only thing that group, it feels like achieved of substance is we... we sent a summary to the state legislature about what we've been working on. And it's only now that we're trying to dig into this policy conversation, because I, in a subset of people, demanded that we have some action around this. So just to set your expectations clearly. Also, I just want to bring up conversations with Maine have been with legislators, not directly impacted people, not with organizers. And also, in relation to Jody and Patricia, it's very easy to use high-profile sensationalized cases to fear monger in the public. Also, the news got it wrong. Jody handed over her shotgun. And also for Patricia, I babysat that young boy. I know them intimately. So my suggestion for folks here is to not talk about pain you know nothing about, especially for a strategic reason. And also, the highest level of office has a convicted sexual predator. So when we're talking about prisons keeping us safe, they're keeping some people in prisons. And do we want to spend $100 million just to keep us safe from a few women we're scared of?
We need to end in two minutes.
All right. We're gonna have to bring it back to the table because we have three minutes before they kick us out of the building.
Oh, so I don't have my two minutes?
We had, unfortunately, we had some that didn't abide by the time limits.
So we're bringing it back to the table.
I absolutely can't speak. I'm a social worker.
Mr. Chair, I think.
We, that included us talking.
Yeah, I think I'd like to really get going on some of the discussion points so we can get an idea of what you're actually saying. So we've had a lot of discussion on, on the application. And this is, in, at the root of, of, the root of this, it's a landowner in the community of Essex, not Essex Junction, not Colchester, not Montpelier, but Essex, who is requesting a change to the zoning. And that's their, their right to do so. So I don't feel, with, with all respect to those who feel that, that incarceration is inappropriate and needs to be changed, that's not the question in front of us. The question is whether or not we want to entertain the modification of zoning that would allow the state to then further evaluate and enter into discussions with the town to determine whether or not the elements that are still in question, such as transportation, such as the emergency services and all those elements that we've been talking about, can even be explored and finalized. Because we had a lot of people. You've had your chance. Everybody's had their chance.
I don't think they have.
We're currently at the table. Thank you.
This is, this is not done. As was said earlier, if this goes forward, there'll be more public comment opportunities. So we have to have a chance to speak about this. And every meeting we've had so far, we've not had a chance to discuss this. So it would be good if you guys would just sit down and let us speak for a little bit amongst themselves. Because that is what our purpose is. So it is, it is still. You'll have more chances later. So again.
Okay, thank you.
Away from the table.
Thank you.
Last time I was cut off, there wasn't enough time last time for me to speak either. And I feel like women of color are continuously interrupted and stopped from speaking at these meetings, because that happened last time. I'm not trying, I just think there's two people that are black women. Can we let them speak, just two women?
We are unable to have this actual discussion at the table, then we cannot proceed with anything. As I said at the beginning, this meeting is a workshop meeting. If we decide at this table that we don't have enough, there will be another workshop meeting which you can attend, and you can be the first to stand up. But we have to do this at the table, or nothing can proceed. Motion to adjourn?
I would, I absolutely would venture motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right. Moved by Ian.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dusty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.